Good evening and welcome to the August 13th, 2024 Board Meeting. It is now in order. I'd like to welcome my fellow Board members and the public. It's encouraging to see so many faces in the audience. I will politely ask the public to help our Board meeting go more smoothly by following a few simple housekeeping rules. The public's opportunity to address the Board is during public comment portion of the meeting. I'd ask that the public refrain from speaking, loud disruptions, distractions, or other form of communication that hinder the business of the Board. Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
At this time, the Board would like to hold a moment of silence and we invite the audience to join. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It feels like it's been forever since we've had a Board meeting, but it's actually only been two weeks. So, all right, at this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members in the community. Does anybody like to go first?
I'll start quick.
Okay.
I just want to say happy first week back to school to all of our staff members, our families, our students. And I just want to say a special shout out to our families who are dropping off pre-K students and kindergarten students. I know this week can be a little scary for both the kids and sometimes more the parents. But just know that your kids are in really good, safe hands, that love them, will wrap their arms around them, and they're going to have an amazing year. So, don't cry too much. And I just also want to say a shout out to so many of our community members and businesses have over the summer had collective drives for school supplies for either schools in their communities or for the Brevard Schools Foundation. So, thank you for everyone who was thinking our kiddos in need. And continue to reach out to your schools locally, see if they need anything, if you're still looking to support. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Campbell, you ready?
Yes. From all accounts that I've heard, yesterday was a successful first day of school. It's always nice to be able to breathe a sigh of relief that we didn't have too many major issues going on. Actually, I emailed Dr. Miller sometime during the day. I said, "I know it's crazy because it's the first day." He said, "Actually, it hasn't been too bad." So, he probably knocked on wood right after that. But just thank you to Dr. Miller in Transportation, to Sue Han and the Facilities Team for taking care of the things that did pop up. And just for all the teams that helped our schools get ready so that we could have a relatively uneventful first day. That's the way we like it. So, I also wanted to shout out to another staff member, and that is Dr. Melinda Mayer, who is over our Charter and Choice area. And I sit for the Board on the Choice Appeals Committee, and I just have gotten to see up close and personal, not just her, but her whole staff, their work they do. Because we have parents who want their children to have different opportunities besides their zone to school, and it's a very emotionally fraught issue. And her team just handles that very well, very personal with each family and with the schools, trying to figure out what's the best for the kid and help them. And so, just shout out to Dr. Mayer and just thank you for the work that you and your team do in making sure that goes smoothly for families.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. All right, Mr. Susan?
I did, I was thinking about this, and I wanted to make sure that it was right, but I'm almost positive that we are the first Board to have every member has a student in the schools. Does everybody here has a kid in the schools, right?
Yes, I do.
So, I wanted to just say, you know, a lot of people, we can relate to many of the parents on the day before school and everything else, like how much it takes out of you, the energy, the excitement, and then they come home and then you're like, "How did school go?" And they just basically fall asleep because they're so tired from the whole day. So, but I did want to say that, that's unique. There's not many school boards throughout the state that I know that every single Board member has a child inside the school. So, this is a, I'm proud of you guys for having a vested interest inside of our schools and what you do. But I did want to say, my day started yesterday at the bus drivers. And one of the things, because I always like to start there, one of the things that many people may not know about the bus driver situation is, is that not only are we fully staffed and everything else, that's great, but we had gotten out so far ahead that the, all of the buses were maintained, all of the buses were ready, everything was scheduled correct. You know what I mean? Like, it was legitimately, there's a time period where you have to go through, transportation has to go through testing and everything of those vehicles, and sometimes they're not all ready on the first day. We have a bunch of reserves, but all the reserves are ready. They were talking about how everybody's been trained, everybody's ready to go. That was a phenomenal stat. And then, I also had the opportunity to go see an individual that's one of the new STEM positions. And there's been some confusion out there about these aren't real, they are standalone STEM positions. And I think that one of the things that was interesting about the conversation was, is how he's taking each one of the school classrooms and tying them into the STEM and then identifying areas of growth for science and everything else. We're looking, this may be a great opportunity for growth in our science and everything else, having that STEM coordinator inside of every school. And then, Vieira Middle School with Ms. McNutt, she did amazing. I stopped over at some assistant librarians and checking in with them. They're excited on the day. And then, I've been dealing with a lot of pre-K parents that are still trying to get their kids in because we have so, we're advertising a lot, so our numbers are going to be really good in those areas. And one of the greatest ones that I did was I stopped off and thanked some of the crossing guards, because we always forget to stop to say thanks to them, and they are just as excited to be there too. So, all the way around, I'm just proud to be a part of BPS, and we have some great staff members out there, and here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Susan and Mr. Trent.
Pretty close to being flawless yesterday. That was, that was really good. I had to make sure the, something didn't happen to my emails, because I didn't get any negative emails on, you know, drop-off lines, not that I didn't get it in person on that, but it went well. Early in the morning, despite the mosquitoes attacking, you know, cheering on those kiddos being dropped off and coming into the school for the, you know, for the first time of the year. It was, it was a great experience. Shout out to the staff and the teachers that, you know, had the smiling faces on that were greeting those kids at the multiple schools I was at. It was, it was the same across the board. So, you know, shout out to all of you. Also, shout out to our Communications and Janet Murnahan and her crew. On top of things, for the beginning of the year, couldn't be any better, couldn't be any smoother. Appreciate all the efforts, and we're excited. It's going to be a great year.
Thank you. All right, so, yes, shout out to Janet and your team. I have to say, honestly, we were all over the place yesterday, and the community, government community relations seemed to track us all, and that was amazing. So, it was a wonderful first day of school. One of the things that really resonated with me walking the school and being there before students came in is the feeling of a building when it's empty and there aren't students in the building, and then the change that happens when kids come in and they're excited and they have their backpacks, and it's just, it's something magical to experience. So, we are so happy all of our kiddos are back in our classrooms, and we're hoping for a wonderful school year and continued improvement for their academic success. We've had a lot of things that have happened, and so I'm going to quickly run through them because I don't want to, I don't want to miss any of them, but want to give a thanks to Space Florida. Space Florida held a signing, an MOU signing, for multiple districts all over the state that have signed on to become a Space Florida Academy. And basically, what that means is that our district is going to dedicate ourselves to certain programs that are going to align with the space industry. And I believe, Dr. Rendell, there's over 20 districts? I don't know if you recall how many districts were there at that signing?
I believe it's 22.
22 districts that came to Brevard here, obviously, since we have the Space Center, fun event, really, a lot of energy, a lot of excitement for what the future looks like and what it holds. Several back-to-school bashes obviously happened, so thank you to Space Coast. Space Coast gave their building up to have an indoor back-to-school bash, which I will, I will say, might be the best thing that ever happened, because there's air conditioning and it happened, obviously, in the month of August, so that's very warm. But then, the North End also had a back-to-school bash, lots of backpacks, lots of things that were given out. That Sunday, I got to participate in the Kicks for Kids event. This is one that I selfishly think is probably the most fun event of the year. So, the North End, they raised $30,000, which is a lot of money, to be able to afford 600 kids the ability to go into a shoe store and pick a pair of shoes off of the shelf, as long as they're a tennis shoe. And so, just being able to stand there with those kids, help the parents that come in with like six kids, and they're running all over and they don't know where to go, and go help them find shoes, and just a huge, huge, huge success. Edna Wilson is a wonderful individual in the North End of the county who helps coordinate this, and honestly, it is a labor of love, and it is just magic that happens in there. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, Edna, for all the work that you do there to make sure our kids show up to school on the first day and have new shoes. Dr. Rendell, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first thing I want to do is thank the negotiating teams on both sides, the district negotiating team and the negotiating team from BFT. And we are opening school with an agreement with our teachers' union, and we don't know officially, because we don't really keep track of those types of things, but nobody in the building can remember ever opening school with a contract already settled. So, that's a huge shout out to the negotiating teams and also the Board for providing direction and support, and thank you to our community for providing the resources to make that happen. I want to turn back the clock a little bit to earlier this summer. I'm going to ask Tara Harris to come up. She's our Assistant Superintendent in charge of Curriculum and Instruction. We've been having these summer enrichment camps for the last couple of years, and we don't always get any feedback on those. So, we got some feedback recently that we thought we would share. So, I'll turn it over to Tara.
This is pretty special, because I, it's, I'm going to bring it up to the daisies in a second, but we actually got a thank you card written by three of our students, so I will share that with you. But I want to read what they, what they wrote in this. The first student, Dear Brevard Schools. I loved going to summer camp this, this year. It was fun to make art projects at Manatee Elementary. I really liked working with clay. I also went to snack making and block printing camp. I love all the camps and stamps I made. Thank you for a fun summer. And that's from Owen. The next comment in here that I'll share is, "Thank you for providing my family an incredible and free summer camp. They have not only given me something to do over the summer, but have also allowed me to get a step ahead of my peers in my studies. I personally took your SAT prep and automotive shop camps, both at Satellite High. I loved both of them and learned critical maintenance on vehicles and how to prepare for the SAT. Because of my experiences with these summer camps, I plan to take more next summer. So, thank you for these summer camps." And that is from Jack. The next one is, "Thank you for letting my family do fun summer camps. I took the Broadway on the Beach camp. I made tons of new friends and learned stuff at this, about the stage my school does not teach. I also went to the snack making and block printing camp and learned something new. I can't wait to do more next year." So, I'm going to bring this up, but I just thought it's super nice. I know that a lot of our teachers go to a lot of effort and give up some of their, you know, summer to do this, so this is a thank you for all of the teachers out there that make those possible.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, ma'am chair, that's it.
All right. Well, that will bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. On this evening's agenda, we have Administrative Staff Recommendations, 19 Consent Items, Two Action Items, and Two Information Items. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the following. Revised for A7 Administrative Staff Recommendations, F9 Minutes, F11 Instructional Staff Recommendations, G29 Department/School Initiated Agreements, and H32, which is the 24-25 Student Progression Plan.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right, we are now at the Administrative Staff Recommendations. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd like to take a moment to recognize a couple of new administrators. So, first, we'd like to congratulate Scott Swinehart on his promotion to Assistant Principal at Kennedy Middle School. Scott, congratulations, come on up.
Lord, Dr. Rendell, if I may, I'd like to first start by thanking my wonderful wife, Shannon, who I have the honor to share this experience with this evening. Were it not for her efforts, her continuous encouragement and support, I certainly wouldn't be here. So, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Next, our wonderful new principal at Kennedy Middle School, Ms. Owens. She's only been there a few days, but I can already tell she's going to make a huge difference. And I thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to serve as part of your administrative team. I really think that we're going to do some really good things, and you're going to be hearing a lot of really good things from Kennedy this year. Ms. Wybel, I hope you haven't left. There you are, Ms. Wybel. Dr. Davis, all the faculty and staff that have provided me words of encouragement and have just helped to build my confidence in moving to this next step, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to them, and I really appreciate it. And finally, to the Board, Dr. Rendell, I really appreciate your vote of confidence, and I look forward to continuing to serve Brevard Public Schools. Thank you again so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'd like to congratulate Sue Degenger, who's being promoted to the position of Assistant Principal at Bayside High School. Sue, congratulations.
I don't know if I'm tall enough.
I know, like, there's a button to lower it.
It's okay, I'm pretty loud.
No, we'll get it.
I don't know.
No, we got it.
There, now we can see you.
There we go.
That's good.
Yes. I want to start by saying thank you to Dr. Rendell and the Board, and Director Sherri Bowman for giving me this opportunity, and my principal, Holly Xander, for choosing me last year for her TOA and then allowing me to step forward due to my efforts and guiding me. She's really been a servant leader for me to watch and see how to interact with our students and faculty at this level. I would also like to say thank you to Vicky Maderas. She was my guide in the dean's office, leading me and helping me make the decisions and guiding me through processes. My friend Felicia Whitfield, who really encouraged me to apply for the TOA position, because I had debated leaving my classroom and leaving my students, because it was a transition after school had started. And then, my husband, who has supported me 30-plus years in all my adventures and things and encouraging me, as well as the Bayside family, the school, the staff, from the custodians to everyone that comes on the campus, encouraged me and just makes me feel like I belong there, and go Bears!
Congratulations. All right, we're going to take a short recess to grab a photo real fast, and then we will be back at 5:50. All right, welcome back. We are now at the public comment portion of the meeting. We have a total of nine speakers tonight. Each will receive three minutes. In an effort to remain unbiased, the speakers at the podium, actually, I shouldn't say that, because I've taken back the time clock now at this point. So, Mr. Gibbs is going to call you up to the podium in three, sorry. I'd like to take the opportunity to remind the public of the rules written out in Board Policy 0169.1. All comments should be directed at the Board or individual Board members. Staff members or other individual names shall not be addressed. Abusive, obscene, or irrelevant comments will not be permitted. Orderly conduct is expected from all public comment participants. The presiding officer may interrupt or terminate a participant's public comment opportunity. Mr. Gibbs, can you please call the first three speakers?
Gina Derring, Greg Ross, Julia Anton.
All right, give me one second, Ms. Gina, let me make sure this is good to go. Ready? Okay, I'm ready, go for it.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gina Derring. I'm a retired teacher from Brevard County. I taught AP Cambridge and IB for 10 years. I've been a grader for 10 years for College Board, and this year, I graded for College Board from home. I always get the DBQ, which is looking at seven documents and grading them, and I guess for seven years, I've gotten the DBQ, so I guess I can read the handwriting. I just want to give you some stats on what's going on with AP. 820,000 essays were written by students, and less than 2,000 people graded those essays. An increase of my subject area, which is world history, that I taught for more years than I taught government and human geo, 20,000 more kids signed up for AP classes, 20,000 from last year to this year. The pass rate for AP World was 64%, but this is what I want to tell you all. They answered the prompt, and if you've ever taught an AP class, you will know that they don't answer the prompt. They're nervous, they see China, and they start writing everything they know about China and not answering the prompt. And this prompt was about the impact of communism from 1930 to 1990, and they nailed it. They nailed it. The pass rate for AP World was 64%. The pass rate for US was 73%. The pass rate for African-American studies not offered in the state of Florida was 73% for a first-year test. Government, 73%. AP Euro, 72%. AP Human Geo, and these are freshmen, okay, these are babies, 56%. Pass rate was, was great, they answered the questions, and I'm going to leave two suggestions. Next year's supposed to be all digital for AP, they've been saying that for two years, though. Please work with their handwriting, because AP, we really vet that question. If I can't read it, I give it to someone else, and then they give it to someone else. It is the last, last effort to not, to give that kid a zero. You don't want to ever do that. You want the ability of the kid to get that credit. Cambridge is not offering digital, so if the kids are taking Cambridge, practice the handwriting. And two teachers from Brevard County, Alex Lopez and Maria San Diego, got 100%.
Can you please not use people's names?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Two friends from, that I've taught with, one from Edgewood and one from Palm Bay, 100% baby, yeah, all right.
Greg Ross, Julia Anton, Nicole Van Ness.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity for public comment. I'm here to speak this evening on the continued book banning policies of this Board. News has broken that additional 105 books were banned, some of them classics such as Heidi, Wuthering Heights, and 20,000 Leagues Under the Sea. These book bans come not as a surprise as many of us in the Brevard community predicted that the book bans would only grow and get more ridiculous. that the book bans would only grow and get more ridiculous under this school board. And here we are. But let's remember how we got here. This board was seated in November of 2022. In response to a request by Moms for Liberty, the new Board of Extremists immediately set forth in December of 2022 to update the BPS Book Ban Challenge policy to make book banning easier. The eventual changes to the policy, removal of books from libraries as soon as they are challenged, not after an actual review. That was you, Mr. Trent. Mr. Susan wanted the school board to consider multiple committees to speed it up. What happened? Removal of all media specialists from the voting committee. No more media specialists providing their qualified expert opinions via votes. The first committee under these new rules immediately banned three books in June of 2023. Still not satisfied with the public scrutiny and having to hear feedback from the citizens, this board was then caught in a secret recording threatening public commenters and members of the reconsideration committee with whom they disagreed. Matt Susan threatened to have the wife of a reconsideration committee member arrested for voicing her opinion. Jean Trent admitted that they should be able to remove a book because they don't like the cover, regardless if the book actually broke the law. Still not happy at the rate of books being banned at BPS, this board then suspended the book reconsideration committee in June of 2023 so they could revisit the policy again. In July of 2023, Moms for Liberty, not happy with the delay in banning of books, decided to read books from the podium in an attempt to get them banned through an unconstitutional state law. Chair Megan Wright was only happy to oblige and ban those books as well. So here we are, right? We now have an internal process that's being done by this board to ban books, right? A process that is out of public overview, out of public sight, and out of public input. It shouldn't be this hard for the public to find out what books have been banned by this board, right? It had to take a public records request by a nonprofit to find these books. What books? How about No David? All because of a little tiny butt, right? They moved it from elementary to middle school. Well, I assume they did because they haven't put out a list of what happened to those books, right? Hope the camera sees that, whichever angle. The same book that Indian River County had them draw pants on the little boy's buttocks. Here we are, 2024. Thank you.
Julia Anton, Nicole Van Ness, Kelly Kirvin.
My first job out of college, I worked-
Oops, sorry.
-in the Deputy Sheriff's Office. Can we, there we go. My first job out of college, I worked in the Deputy Sheriff's Office in Jefferson County, Alabama, which is Birmingham, has a kind of a nasty history of police behavior in that area. Well, when I started working there, in my initial training, they emphasized very strongly that I was to obey any lawful order that I was given. And then they circled back and they said the key word is lawful. Remembering the bad history of police dogs, fire hoses, not responding to calls for help, ignoring lynchings, et cetera, lawful was the key word. They were changing their practice. And the new practice was you obey lawful orders, but if you're pressured to be a part of something that's not lawful, you don't do it. If you stand up to the pressure, we've got your back. If you bow to the pressure, you're on your own and you don't want to be there. Now, that's the way that it's supposed to be, especially with public employees. They should feel safe and confident to do their jobs lawfully and be backed up by their employers. That's the way it's supposed to be. But here we have books being weeded for no discernible reason, and the reason given is HB 1069. And the only reason that I can think of is that they have fear that you're not going to stand up to them when those Moms for Liberty people start shouting, "We want to have this person arrested because I don't like that book." Now, maybe I'm making a big leap, but I have been trying since Friday to figure out any justification for weeding the Yearling and listing the reason as HB 1069. Have you read the Yearling? Hopefully you have, and if you haven't, you need to go home tonight, download it on your Kindle or your Audible, and you need to not sleep until you finish it. If there was ever a book that teaches young adults, children morphing into adulthood about responsibility, this is the book. If there was ever a book that addressed the number-one conflict of every teenage since the beginning of time, which is rebelling against parental authority, this is the book that teaches the child that mom and dad actually do love you and they know what they're talking about and they actually are looking out for you, no matter how much you think you know more than they do. There's no HB 1069 reason for pulling that book. They're afraid you won't stand up to them if Moms for Liberty doesn't like it.
Thank you.
Not true.
Nicole Van Ness, Kelly Kirvin, Rochelle Jolly. It's Nicole Van Ness.
My question is directed towards Matt Susan. Our son attends Fiera Middle School and our home is right at the two-mile mark for the bus route. So we know we're not eligible for a bus. However, the route used to measure the distance includes kids like mine and several others crossing from our neighborhood right at the intersection of Fiera Boulevard and Stadium Parkway, with no crossing guard, by the way. So my question is, is what are we doing to make sure that these kids can get to and from school safely? It's a concern from several people in my neighborhood and others, other neighborhoods past Fiera Boulevard as well. Do you guys ever answer or are you just here to listen?
We typically, it's not a back-and-forth conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, this is my first time at one of these, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, with you in just a second.
Sure.
Just hang on till after public comment.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Kelly Kirvin, Rochelle Jolly, Julie Mantion.
When I come to the podium, I am talking to five elected officials. My comments may include our superintendent if the topic warrants it, but by far and large, my comments are about school board members who have engaged in unprofessional behavior, shady low-level corruption, bad governance, to include poor policy writing, discriminatory statements, and ignoring unintended consequences, disrespecting teachers and their classroom autonomy, censorship of ideas and information, and unsafe practices like guns inside our classrooms. In short, the school board is not the district, but the school board does influence how people feel about the district. A list of books was released through a public records request BPS fulfilled. That list contained over 100,000 books that have been weeded, which also means removed from public libraries around the district. But that isn't unusual. What was unusual was the over 100 books removed because of HB 1069, otherwise known as the Book Banning Bill. Books like 20,000 Leagues Under the Sea and of Green Gables, Heidi, Little Women, The Last of the Mohicans, The Yearling, and the Negro Baseball Leagues, Tales of Umpiring Legendary Players, Breaking Barriers, and Making American History. The public outcry was swift and the statement released to the public by BPS lacked transparency and honesty. First, if you weed a book from a library because of HB 1069, then it can never go back in until HB 1069 is repealed. That isn't to be confused with a book removed because it's in poor condition because that book can be replaced. Under HB 1069, the book has been banned. Second, the school-level banning is no different than district-wide book banning, but unlike district-wide book banning, school-level book banning isn't listed on the website unless it's been informally challenged. Parents have the right to know every book that has been banned from their child's school. Third, if I am to believe that most of the books on the list were banned in elementary schools and then moved to middle schools like the statement claims, I have to ask, why are we banning middle school books for middle school students? Did you forget that sixth grade is middle school? We are one of a few districts in the entire state that still houses sixth grade in elementary school, but their curriculum is not K-5, it's middle school. The statement confirms you're taking age-appropriate books away from age-appropriate students, or the statement was always a lie, and when it says discard, it means discarded or trashed. Because we all know you didn't take A Court of Mist of Fury out of elementary schools and put it in middle schools because it was always a high school book that's been banned in the entire district. And just so we're clear, I'm not blaming our media specialists. They're stuck between bad laws at the state level and bad governance from the school board, all while knowing the school board doesn't have their backs. This list, that statement, was a culmination of nearly two years of bad governance, shady practices, and putting politics over our students.
Rochelle Jolly, Julie Mantion, and Karen McWorder.
The first banned book recorded in the United States was actually before there was even a United States. The Puritans that had settled the colonies banned a book and exiled its author, Thomas Morton. He dared to write about the mistreatment of the indigenous people who were here when the colonists arrived. This was a threat to the Puritans and their way of life. You see, he was too friendly with the indigenous people, he advocated for them and criticized his fellow colonists. His book was published in 1637. They tried to exile him. Banning books is nothing new. Books are a threat to narrow minds. They're dangerous to the status quo. They threaten authority and dictators. When Frederick Douglass's slave master discovered that his mistress was teaching Frederick to read, he said, "If you let him read, he will be restless. He won't be satisfied with his condition." It was against the law for an entire group of people in this country to learn to read. When they were allowed to read, what they were allowed to read was restricted. The number-one book they were not allowed to read was the Bible. Because slave masters did not want the enslaved to learn, they did not want them to learn about Moses and the Great Exodus, for it might inspire and cause them to be unsatisfied with their enslavement. It might cause them to understand more fully their possibility of freedom. Restricting books and information was a primary in maintaining control of them. During the reign of Hitler, there was a great removal of books. Books were removed or banned that were deemed un-German. Un-German books were considered dangerous. They banned books about Jewish culture, Jewish organizations, Jewish history. Nazis banned books about sexuality and race. All of this in order to control the masses and achieve a cleansing, a state censorship and control of culture. To quote Joseph Goebbels, "No to decadence and moral corruption, yes to decency and morality and family and state." Once these books were banned, they were then burned, removed forever. As you can see from the very beginning, banning books, controlling information, and who has access to that information is not about protecting people, it's about controlling them. These book banners were not authority on morality and decency, they were hateful and inhumane. Do you really want to be on the same list as these historians? Book banners, Puritans, slave masters, Hitler, Brevard Public Schools, Matt Susan, Jean Trent, Megan Wright, Katie Campbell.
Julie Mantion, Karen McWorder, Paul Raub.
Sorry, who is this one?
Julie Mantion.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity and happy new school year. Normally, I'm here as a champion strictly of books, but I was reflecting on current events this summer and I realized I want to use my time today to talk about a champion of nuance. And the more education that we have, the better we can appreciate nuance. And there were particularly three instances this past summer that showed more education will equal greater understanding. The first was the opening ceremonies of the Paris Olympics, where people didn't have enough nuance to know about that the Olympics began in 776 as a religious festival to Zeus and include Dionysus, and therefore they only saw things in one context. And what a disservice we do to our students when we only provide them with one way of looking at the world and they lack nuance, they're essentially lacking education. The second instance this summer was the boxer from Algeria. That has become a huge topic in terms of transgender. I hear people sneer all the time, "There's only two sexes. Democrats can't even name what a woman is." Well, guess what? It turns out it is more complicated. It turns out you can be born with female body parts and still have male levels of testosterone, or maybe even two different chromosomes. Is serving every student with excellence not teaching them what is appropriate science? Is banning AP Psychology because it wants to engage in nuance, is that appropriate for institutions of education? And finally, we had a presidential candidate who called out his opponent for turning black.
That's not true.
And, no, that's the exact quote, Mr. Trent.
Nice try.
But he, I couldn't help but think that one of the reasons that AP African-American Studies was banned in the state of Florida was because it uses the concept of intersectionality, specifically in regards to James Baldwin, that he was both, he identified as an African-American man and as a gay man. Perhaps if we were able to have these concepts in education, we would better be able to understand nuance and truly accomplish our mission to serve every student with excellence. Our mission should not be bubble wrap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen McWorder, Paul Raub. Karen McWorder.
Much of what I felt needed to be said has already been covered by other speakers, but I would like to just briefly address the issue of literacy and removing books from student access and removing authority and disrespecting the expertise of library and media specialists. I taught English at the high school level for 20 years and I gave it up upon moving to Florida because I didn't feel that this was an environment that respected my expertise or would afford me the ability to do what I loved. And I think that there are a great many teachers leaving Florida education or refusing to participate for that very reason. And I think that's important.
Paul Raub.
So, it's, I wish I couldn't rely so much on the grand tradition of not learning from history that you guys seem to live by, or just not learning, or being against learning. I mean, that is how you get the coveted Moms for Liberty endorsement, Matt, good job. Because learning means admitting, acknowledging that you were wrong about something at one point, or God forbid that your parents were wrong about something at one point or another, which seems to be the overarching concern of that organization. But, you know, we like to repeat other people's mistakes, maybe even improve on them. Escambia becomes a laughingstock for mask book removal? We can do that, we can slide it under a few different reasons, we can call it everything HB 1069. Indian River County draws little pants on the No David book. Well, we're just going to take it away from the elementary school students entirely, banning by any meaningful definition. Or if it was moved to middle school, please let me know the middle school readers who are clamoring to read kids' picture books. I mean, good for them, enjoy, have fun. But it applies in other areas, too. Palm Beach County has an accident where someone's injured during their guardian-like, during training for their guardian-like program. The very next morning, with that little bit of knowledge, is when you snuck that vote, slid that vote under the transom to authorize it here. We've seen the video from Broward County, some schools near where I used to live, taking, what, hours, two, three hours in some cases for kids to get in the morning with the new metal detectors? But we're going to float the idea of let's throw those in here as well. Even though guns are so safe that we should definitely have more of them in the schools, we should also be looking for them with the metal detectors that have not been proven to actually improve things. But another grand tradition is we don't like data very much, so it all checks. You do know that metal detectors won't detect books, the things we're actually afraid of, just so everybody understands that. And I know that, you know, later on, once the public- And I know that, you know, later on, once the public commenters are done, there'll be the sort of safe space where you're going to have your comments about misinformation and so forth when nobody can respond. But, yeah, people may have misinterpreted, or certainly differently interpreted, what the word discard meant in a spreadsheet, because we thought it meant, you know, discard. And also, history says getting books off the shelves as quick as possible is referred to as streamlining the process. But don't be surprised if people don't buy your explanation. We don't trust you farther than we can throw you, which is not a threat, it's a figure of speech.
All right. All right, guys. We are, is everybody good? We're going to keep on going? All right, awesome. That concludes the public comment section of the meeting, so thank you for taking the time to address the board about your concerns. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. There are 19 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any of the items? None? All right. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? None? No? All right. All right, so Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Dr. Rendell, will you let us know about the items under the action portion of the agenda this evening?
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first action item is H-29, department and school-initiated agreements.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The last action item is H-30 procurement solicitations.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
All right, we will move on to the information agenda, which includes two items for the board to review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items today. Does any board member wish to discuss these items? No? All right, then we are now at the board member reports. Does any board member have anything further to report or discuss?
I'll share, Thursday, FSBA hosted a regional meeting over in Orlando, and one of the guests was Max Schacter, and the organization that's responsible for the school safety dashboard, and they released their, this year, their version 2.0 that records not just like Cessar reporting data and things like that, but bigger pictures, demographic data. And so he encouraged everyone to take a look at that, and it is the SafeSchoolsForAlex.org is the organization, and it's SchoolsafetyDashboard.org, and they're actually trying to expand outside of the state, too, but you can actually go to your kid's school and see the data. And I just wanted to point out, you know, he made the point of saying, you know, the goal is not to trash any particular school and say, "Oh, look at the data." He actually pointed out, for those of you who aren't aware, Max Schacter is one of the parents whose child was murdered at Marjory Stoneman Douglas in 2018. And he made the point of saying, when you look at a school that has really low Cessar data, that he's more concerned about that, because if you look at the Cessar data for Marjory Stoneman Douglas for the years prior to 2018, they had zero bullying incidents reported, zero threats, zero, you know, and it's really, so he said, "I don't mind seeing a school that has lots of reporting, because that shows they're doing the reporting and they're being transparent." So he, I encourage you guys to take a look at that resource, they've got all kinds of data, and it's coming from us, it's our district data that goes up to the state, but to lots of different organizations, and so what they did was they took all that information and just kind of pulling it together, and it's a project with the University of Florida, so a tool for board members to use, for the public to use, and so it's just lots of good information, and I appreciate them coming out and talking to us, I'd share that with you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other board members have anything to discuss or report? Do you want?
No.
No? All right. I am going to address this, because you guys are all sitting here, and so when we have public comment, you are right, we cannot speak back to you, so it is frustrating, right? Because that's not a conversation, it's a one-way street, it's you talking at us or us talking at you. And what I will say is the misinformation that's being spread by a few is wildly inappropriate, it really is. So I laugh, because one of the books that's on this list that you spread, my own child came home with the curriculum for her eighth-grade class and is reading one of these books that you claim is being banned and removed from schools. So I'm just saying this to you to say, this is not accurate. You guys are believing this, and it's not completely accurate. And the other part that I will say, when it comes to these books being moved and put from one place to another, number one, the board doesn't have any say in that, we're not doing that, we're not directing a media specialist to do such a thing, that is not coming from us. So if a media specialist decides to do that, they're doing that on their own. So that is not us, just so you know. The board does review the books that have been challenged, that is true, and that's a process, it's in the sunshine. We have the book review committee, a couple of you, or one of you that spoke tonight is on that committee, so very much, that is open, out in the open, everyone gets to see that. But what I, what is a little just disheartening to me is that everything on the internet is not fact. It's not. I hate to say that. And so that is, when I look at this list, I go, wow, I mean, my own kid's reading it in her eighth-grade class for curriculum, so I'm just saying to you, it's not accurate, it isn't. So I understand that people, this topic is a topic that people get very emotional one way about it or another way about it. And actually, quite frankly, people get emotional on both sides of the aisle about this same topic, because I don't want my kids reading things inappropriately, but I don't want to ban books either. So the two things kind of go side and side, or side, hand in hand, excuse me, because you think about this, too, this is, this made me think about this earlier. The, when we talked about the FSBA advocacy and like things that we want to go back, one of the things that I have said from the beginning that would help every school district, because this problem will never go away, it's going to be an issue forever, is if there were an explicit content warning, just the same as if my daughter, who's 13, tries to buy a CD that has curse words in it, she can't buy it at Walmart, because it has explicit language, it requires parental consent. It would be great if the state would step in and require some type of notification like that, and then this doesn't, this no longer is us, this is, okay, parents, are you okay with your children checking out a book with explicit content? Yes or no? I mean, that, that would be a good thing to probably advocate for, so I'm just putting that out there to you. Ms. Campbell, I don't know, I don't, you know, that would solve this problem tenfold, I think, honestly. So that's all I'm going to say about the book banning rhetoric that's going on and going all over the internet. It's not true, it's inaccurate, so. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything else further to report?
I have something to say, that, because I'm so tired, I said this last time, I'm tired of us, at the end of board meetings, disparaging public comments. People can come and make a public comment and say the sky is green. The fact that us as leaders in the community feel the need to disparage those public comments every single time is getting exhausting. What is being shared on the internet is not false. It was given to them as a public record. You may not agree with the interpretation, but your role as a leader is then to explain what it means, correct the record. You don't disparage the public for legitimately reading a public record that was disseminated by our school district to them with those exact words on it. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
No, no, ma'am, you don't get to cut me off, I'm speaking. Sorry, just because you don't like what I have to say.
Ms. Jenkins.
No, Ms. Wright, I'm speaking, point of order.
Thank you.
Point of order. Ms. Wright, I am speaking. Thank you. The end of this board meeting isn't a time for us to disparage the public, where they can't say something back. If you disagree, clear the air, put out a statement, ask your staff members why there's confusion, ask GCR to put out a clarification. They did. They did not put out a good clarification. It said they were moved from elementary school to middle school, that is not accurate. There are books on that list that were banned from high schools. It doesn't make sense, it is not an accurate clarification. So when the public is genuinely confused, it is our role as leaders to clean it up, even if they're wrong. If they're wrong and confused, it should identify to you that it needs to get cleaned up. So stop taking it as an offense and just fix it. If you truly believe you're correct, put out a clear and clean statement. But that statement that was put out is not accurate. Take a look at the list, it's not accurate, so clear the air. If those books weren't removed, say they weren't removed, identify which ones weren't removed, but some of those were legitimately already banned from our book committee, so it's not an accurate statement, so stop saying that.
I would like to put out some information that I think would help clear the air, and the people in the public can agree or disagree, but the fact is that most of the books on that list that are labeled HB 1069, they were removed by a media specialist at a school, not in every school, but by that media specialist at that school, and so they ended up on the list. But what I would say is people need to read HB 1069, because it includes so much more than just sexual content, explicit content. It also has other things that media specialists are charged to determine if those books are appropriate for the library, and that has to do with age level, reading level, and so whether, you know, you know what, and you know what, I'm, I will not, I wouldn't want to see the public coming after these media specialists, and in going after the media specialists, because they decided. You know, part of me would say, yeah, I'd like for you to be able to ask why they removed this particular book from this particular library, but that was their professional decision. So sometimes we'd come down and, oh, we don't want the professional, we want the professionals to be the professionals. In this case, the professionals use their professional judgment, and you can put it on the legislature and say, oh, well, that, that law was bad, or that you think that the board is so intimidating that that media specialist didn't want, went overboard, but those books haven't been removed from every school that had those books. That's, that's not true. So I am happy to say that, but I do think people need to go and read 1069, and I, thank you, Ms. Harris, because she informed the board after this started coming out, that in the future, for clarity's sake, there will be more than just HB 1069, it will say, it will say specifically, what, was it, was it age-appropriate? And I'm sorry that you guys haven't heard that, because I thought that went out, and it was clarified as well. Okay, so now, thank, let me clarify that. In the future, Ms. Harris has told us that the codes are different, there are additional codes, so it will say, was it explicit content, was it that it wasn't the right reading level for that school, all of the things that are in HB 1069, those things, so it'll be out there, and the media specialists will have those choices, in addition to books that never got checked out, so they weeded them, in addition to the book is in terrible shape, and so we threw it away. All of those things will be, will be options, and so will be clear in the future. So this whole process, yes, it created a lot of drama, unnecessarily, in my opinion, but the good thing out of it is now we will have more clarity moving forward, and so people will know more specifically what was the reason behind the media specialist removing that book.
And, Ms. Campbell, I appreciate that response, because that is legitimately what people are asking for. They're asking for the transparency.
Can you give everyone else an opportunity to speak, if they would like to speak or not, so we'll move down the line? Do you have anything to say about this or add to it?
I think the key is, is that there's misinformation, and then there was a statement made, but at any point, at any point, point of order. Can you, can you tell, point of order? Thank you. The issue is, is that they continued to spread the misinformation after they were said, and there was a statement out by our BPS, and at no time did they say, hey, let's meet and talk about this to get the right information out, and they continue to do it. And that's just disgusting. It's just disgusting, because here we are trying to open the schools, trying to do stuff, and this, this narrative that's not true is pushed out there, and it's wrong, it's completely wrong. That's it.
All right. Dr. Rendell, do you, sorry, Jean, do you, and I didn't give you a chance to speak, I don't know if you want to speak.
Okay, well, now then I can say my second turn.
No.
Yes, yes. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything further to report?
No, Ms. Wright, Ms. Wright, just because you don't agree with my statement doesn't mean you can stop me from speaking. Mr. Susan, it was not misinformation, it is not the public's job to meet with you, it is your job as the leader of the community to articulate information to the public. It is your job as a leader of this community to articulate information to the public.
Ms. Wright, I don't care if you disagree with me, I have a right to speak. If it looks like when you're in your 30s. Okay, Dr. Rendell, do you have anything else further to report?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, I believe the statement did include information that the, in the future, there will be more menu options reported in the, in the decision-making or whatever. The other thing is, I really don't want to editorialize, but I just find it ironic that the board was criticized for removing media specialists from the book review process. They were the trusted professionals, we were told. They were the ones that have all the experience and know what books are appropriate and whatnot. This list was generated, this action was done by media specialists, the ones that supposedly have all the experience and knowledge to make those types of decisions. So we were criticized for not having them in the process of the book review committee, but when they act in their roles and responsibilities as a media specialist, then we're criticized for them doing that. I just find it ironic.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, no further comment, this meeting is adjourned.